Moved and seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So I'm just going to use my trusty pen here and check these off. Then we move into the recognition of student staff and public. And tonight, we have a friend from TRIA Orthopedic Center. Let's see. "The school district is fortunate to have businesses and organizations supporting our learners in the community of Bloomington. In appreciation of these collaborative efforts, the school board recognizes our friends of education. Our friend being recognized this evening is TRIA Orthopedic Center." I'd like to invite Director Oliva to come up and make tonight's introduction.
So I was instructed not to go too far off script, but I just have to say that I do love TRIA. We have used them quite a bit ourselves with three children at home. We've gone there with a lot of broken wrists and concussions, and they do a wonderful job. So it was an honor, and I was very happy that they asked me to do this introduction. TRIA Orthopedic Center has become the brand name in sports medicine in Minnesota. TRIA provides the team physicians for all Minnesota major sports teams. Dr. Joel Boyd is the founder of the TRIA Orthopedic Center and is the team physician for the Wild and the Vikings. Dr. Boyd developed a vision for TRIA's role in Minnesota communities in striving to foster strong relationships within the community to make a difference. His plans included starting and growing a partnership with the Bloomington Community Sports Programs by linking Bloomington teams, programs, teams and programs with TRIA physicians and providing training and support for coaches and parents. Through the efforts of Dr. Boyd and his colleagues Bob Fink, the Business Development Director, and Amy Hamilton, Sports Medicine Program Manager, that vision has materialized as TRIA is actively involved with our BAJs and BAA coaches, parents, and players. TRIA has partnered with the Bloomington Public Schools in a personal health sports program. This program helps to provide hygiene supplies to youth within our schools who, for a variety of reasons, do not have access to adequate supplies in their home environment. Recently, the district received a check in the amount of $1,370 to support this program. Funds were raised by TRIA employees and matched by the TRIA Community Service and Philanthropy Committee. Please join me in welcoming Bob Fink and Amy Hamilton as we invite them to highlight TRIA's collaborative efforts with Bloomington Public Schools and the Bloomington community.
Well, thank you, Rick, and thank you to the board and all the members of the school district. It's been our pleasure to be involved in Bloomington. We've been in Bloomington for quite a few years, and we've decided over the last six months to a year to no longer only to be just located in Bloomington, but to move on to become part of Bloomington. So our efforts with the school district, as Rick has outlined, and with the various community associations like BAA and BAJ and the Art Center and the city park and recs, we're trying to become part of Bloomington and really be a true community citizen. And Amy has done a lot of the real heavy work. I just kind of get to stand up here and say hello. So maybe I'll turn it over to Amy for a couple of comments. But thank you very much to all of you, and we look forward to an ongoing relationship that's beneficial to our students here in Bloomington.
Thank you. Yes, it's been a lot of fun as we've gotten to know different members of the community and gotten to know certainly the coaches and the individuals that are involved with Bloomington Athletic Association. And I've had the pleasure of being able to attend several of the coaches and parents meetings and do a little bit of education so far with regard to the coaches and the parents. Simple things such as safety on the field or in the gym, how to recognize an emergency, knowing when to refer, making sure that there's a good emergency action plan in place, recognition of concussion, of course, that big hot topic right now, that hot button item, recognizing symptoms of concussion, knowing when to refer, and what the progression back from a concussion is. So looking to do more, it seems that every place we've gone so far seems to have more questions and has built on opportunities, which we are grateful for to get out there. You know, we're passionate about kids, we're passionate about adults, and the entire community being active and participating in sports. And we want to see that participation increase or maintain while they can do it safely. And if we can aid in that, keeping our kids and our adults active but safe while they're doing it, we're happy to do so.
Thank you very much for coming up. I'd like to, before you get away, I'd like to invite Eileen Kern, Supervisor of the Health Services, to come on up. And I know she has some more really nice things that she wants to say about you.
I just have a very quick comment that the Health Service Department would just like to express our gratitude to Mr. Fink and Ms. Hamilton and the people of TRIA for their generous donation that will help provide supplies for the students throughout the district. And to also say that my family has quite extensively used TRIA. Five athletic children and a klutzy self. There we go. Just thank you so much for your generous donation.
Thank you, Eileen. The next item on our agenda here is this is Volunteer Recognition Week. We're looking for a motion here. Does somebody have?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Director.
Veep resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 adopts the attached proclamation declaring April 2014 is Volunteer Recognition Month in the Bloomington Public Schools.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Let's see, we have Debbie Belfries with us.
Good evening. We are here collectively, there are a lot of representatives from the school district and all organizations of the school district that use volunteers every day in our buildings throughout the district. And with me is Gina Carpenter also.
Good evening. And this is, again, my favorite time of year, an opportunity for us to get together and publicly recognize what our volunteers do for all our students and our staff and our school programs each and every day throughout the school year. So thank you. And I'd like to introduce Mary Jo Bayless, who is my Assistant Coordinator with the Metro South Adult Volunteer Program.
And Sue Martel, who is the Placement Specialist for the Volunteer Connection Program serving birth to grade 12.
Mary Jo and Sue, could you collectively raise your hand? There you go. Now we know who you are.
They're going to introduce our volunteers that are here tonight, too, from some of the other organizations.
For the Adult Basic Education Program, we have great volunteers who help us in the classroom, out in the community, and providing office support. I'm not sure if you are aware, but we assess our students quite frequently, and we do need some volunteers to help us file those tests away so that we can be accountable to the state and federal authorities. Also part of Metro South Adult Basic Education, last year, we got some of our students together along with our staff and volunteers and took a great photo out on the stadium at the football field. And Mary Jo, one of her other many talents is she's our photographer, so I think she got up on a really tall ladder that day to capture this photo of our students. But a lot of our volunteers support our students in our English second language classes, in our GED classes, adult diploma, our college prep classes both at Metro South Campus and at Normandale Community College, in our Career Pathways Initiatives, and with our Learning Exchange classes, which are adults with disabilities programming. This year, as with several years in the past, Metro South has a Career Pathway Initiative that's part of the Minnesota Department of Education Adult Basic Education Initiatives. We have customer service classes, child development associate classes, certified nursing assistant prep classes, medical terminology. We did a parapro pilot class this last year. We are preparing for work in computer skills. And you can see some familiar faces here. We invited some of the school board members and Debbie here to participate in our mock interviews. And it's really helpful for our students to kind of practice those interview skills. You know how nervous you are when you go for an interview. Imagine what that is like when English is not your first language. So we appreciate their time in helping our students practice those important interview skills and provide feedback to them. This year, we've also been fortunate to have an employment navigator placed with us through the Minnesota Opportunity Corps, and that's Bushra Rizvi. Bushra works one-to-one with the students in helping them set career goals, work on job applications, practice their interviews, prepare resumes, and search out other networking opportunities for them. I'm not sure how many of you had an opportunity last spring to come to our Arlie's Got Talent presentation put on by our Learning Exchange participants. We would not have been able to have this opportunity for these 40 adult participants without the partnership of our stage partners. Most of them were Normandale Service Learning students. This was a wonderful, wonderful presentation that Learning Exchange was able to do for the community. And volunteers help in other Learning Exchange classes as well, helping students one-to-one to be able to fully participate in our classes. This year at Metro South, we have our theme, Volunteers Help Us Dream, Explore, and Do More. And that fits in with our whole dream for Metro South this year. We really feel that the volunteers who work with us help our students dream about their future opportunities, help them explore their options, and really help them do more in achieving their post-secondary goals.
In so many ways, we provide support, as I mentioned, in a lot of different capacities in our school district, including our PTSA members, and we'll introduce somebody from that council tonight, our room parents, our recess helpers, media center helpers, and lunchroom food servers. And tonight, we also have somebody here representing the food service workers. Just a reminder to everybody, you can find these volunteer opportunities on our website of the school district. And if you get to any one of those types of support areas in the school district, and as we talk to you, that isn't maybe exactly what you were thinking that you wanted to do, we will make sure that you will get connected with one part of the school district where you can best use your talents and your abilities. As you can see, we collaborate all of what we do throughout the district. I do want to talk tonight. We will have a representative talking about our Homework Connection Program. It's a program you can see found at Westwood, Washburn, Indian Mountains, Olson, Poplar Bridge, Normandale Hills, Oak Grove Middle School, and at Oxboro Library. We have a partnership with Hennepin County Libraries that became a model for other Hennepin County library sites, and that is hugely successful. On Tuesday evenings, please feel free to stop by. You might be asked to help with a little math homework, but we'd love to have you stop by and look at that program and how that program operates over at the library in collaboration with the friends of the Hennepin County Library there. We also obviously support our learners. These are all academic tutors that we place out of the Volunteer Connection Office. We have already placed 620 volunteers supporting our students this year, and we are not done because we just put out our notice looking for summer help at our summer school programs. And so we're always looking for people year-round in any way that it might fit their schedules. So it's a very easy process, and we'll talk to you about what's convenient, whether you're a community member or anybody else. We always look for retired teachers and peer professionals to come and volunteer with us when they're done in certain capacities in the school district. We, through the Volunteer Connection Office, place our basic skills tutors, our classroom assistants. We use and collaborate with America Reads, America Counts tutors, our English Language tutors, and then we have a whole set of people that just like to do our homework programs for an hour in the afternoon two days a week. We also partner with a variety of organizations to find those tutors, including our nonprofit organizations, business partners, faith communities in Bloomington. We do a collaborative effort with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Serve Minnesota, and so a lot of the federal programs that have people in the community contact us because we have a system for them to be able to enter easily and quickly to become working partners with us in Bloomington Public Schools. We also count on our post-secondary partners. These are just some, Hennepin Technical College. Normandale Community College is a huge feeder system for volunteers and service learning workers for us and with us. We place their students that are in their introductory education courses because they all need experience, and they're always looking for a place to get some experience working with students. So that is a huge component of our volunteer workforce. So together, we all, our staff, our volunteers, community partners, make a difference in the lives of our Bloomington students, and we're going to hear from a couple of them. Anything else, Gina?
I just wanted to thank the school board for your ongoing commitment and support of our volunteers in our programs, both for K-12 and for our adult academic program.
And now we'll turn it over to Sue Martel, who's going to introduce a couple of the people representing different support groups of volunteers.
Well, thank you, board members and staff. It is my privilege to always welcome community and college members that want to be academic Tonight, I'd like to introduce a few of the dedicated volunteers that we have. One person we have is Nancy Bergwick, and Nancy is one of our food service workers who share time each week assisting cooks to deliver healthy meals to Bloomington students. She serves lunch at Washburn and at Oak Grove Middle School. Now Nancy is one of the 276 volunteers that help serve meals for Bloomington students, and that's wonderful. And many of those students, they may serve lunch at this day, they may volunteer in a classroom on another day, and they may work on Tuesday night and help at the library. So there's just fantastic people that volunteer in Bloomington. And my job, I get to meet all those people. And it's a pretty fun thing because I don't ever meet people that isn't willing to share and is really motivated and dedicated to help our students. Another very, very important group is our PTA people. And I'd like to welcome our dedicated PTSA President, Linda Batterson, who will share some great news about the PTA members who actively support our schools.
Oops, I'm attached here. I think I'll watch out for that. Hi, I'm Linda Batterson, PTSA Council President. And the PTSA Council consists of, we have 15 schools in the district and also some advisory groups, and we all come together once a month throughout the year. One representative from each of the schools, and we come together as a council, meet on a Wednesday, 11:30, the second Wednesday of every month, and gather our thoughts together. We meet with administration, we meet with Les Fujitaki, thank you, Les, and board members, thank you to you. We meet with the students, and we meet with teachers throughout the year, and whatever needs they may have, we kind of collaborate. So this year, tonight, I came from another meeting, and it involved the Youth Advisory Committee Council and the school board. And again, we have our, this year, our sixth annual food drive coming up at the end of the month. So we kind of were working with the kids to work on some thoughts that they might do for their, each of their schools to collect food donations for Veep. Veep was there tonight. We'll have flyers posted throughout the school, the school's district. And this year, we're hoping to, we're hoping to gather in pounds of actual food donations and in cash, which converts to pounds. I believe it's five pounds per dollar. Veep can purchase five pounds of food. So they'll collect that for the week, and hopefully we'll raise, our goal is 85,000 pounds of food. Last year, we hit the mark of, after making a goal of 40,000, we hit the mark of 67,000 pounds. So hopefully this year, we're going to surpass that, and maybe someone, who was it? I think it was Tom that said, or Rick that said that maybe we should hit 100,000 this year. We'll see. We've got excitement this year. Last year, we worked with a couple, a couple of the schools worked with businesses and incorporated it and collected the food for the week, so that helped us get to our goal. This year, we have just about every school partnered with a Bloomington business in hopes to hit the goal of food donations to Veep. And as Veep said tonight, the important thing is, at the end of the school year, when we go into the summer months, those that are free and reduced lunch, they have the option to go to Veep and get some food for the summer. So I want to thank PTSA Council. This is my third year. This is my last year. There's a lot of teacher, a lot of familiar faces out here. My twins graduate, they're seniors at Jefferson. My daughter graduated last year, so we're out of here, hopefully. Anyway, I want to take a minute and say thank you to my council because they are a great group of people. They are just, it's a joy to come and meet them once every month and get together and kind of communicate between the schools and help each other. A huge thank you goes out to Betsy Longley, who is the secretary, Karen Cook, who is VP, and Bonnie Berry, who is treasurer. And they've helped me out immensely this past year and the year before, and I'm going to miss everybody. So I just want to say thank you and good to see everybody.
Linda, I'd like to say you said you're going to be out of here? Just so you know, I was the first graduating class out of this school, and I'm still here. If people do it right and you're in a great community, why leave? There's always something you can do. Remember, my oldest volunteer is 94, so we're around for a long time. I just want to mention another couple that I brought here that are going to represent all our 620 volunteers, academic volunteers. In 2009, I had the pleasure to meet the next volunteer couple, Peter and Joyce Heinrich, who love to share their joy of reading with Valley View students. Now, they have volunteered over 900 hours in the last five years. And what I mean the love of reading, I mean the love of reading. Between the two of them, they read about 15 books a week. I am not kidding. I've seen them. I've seen them at the library with these stacks of books. It's wonderful. And Peter has so much knowledge that any student that comes into the Oxboro Family Homework Connection, he can help. He is just a wonderful resource. But what they did before they started that is Joyce volunteers in first grade at Valley View. And she's been working with those first graders, instilling her love of reading with all those new readers. And Peter, he is a rocking reader, which would make sense. Now, the rocking readers, just so you know, there's 17 rocky readers at Valley View, and what they do is they read to five kindergarten students each year. They have five students, they read to them every week. And what they love about that, and they tell me that in the fall, they're reading to the students. By spring, by May, the students are reading to them. And I have volunteers that have been here for over 20 years that have been rocking readers, and Peter's one of them, and he's really great. But because of Joyce and Peter's commitment, we've been able to support the Oxboro Library Family Homework Connection. Oxboro, about four years ago, I guess five years ago now, they contacted the Volunteer Connection Office and said, you know, we have families that have needs, helping their children with homework. Would you want to start a Homework Connection at Oxboro Library? And they had the need, they had the space, and all we had to do is find volunteers. Well, Peter and Joyce stepped up, and they've been here every year since then. Every Tuesday night from 5:30 to 7:30 at Oxboro Library, whoever comes in will get help with their homework. It doesn't matter what age. We have preschoolers, we have high schoolers. Thank goodness, I've got really great volunteers, some high school volunteers that can help with that math, and it's wonderful. It's really wonderful, but they have been here since the beginning, and they're there every week. But because of you and all these dedicated volunteers that we have, it really shows that the Bloomington community embrace our children, and I want to thank everyone for all that they do. But Peter, if you'd like to come up and say a few words?
Sure. And watch out for the bell phone here. I have shoes that are held on by old fare crew. The ones I have on are a little bit different. I have come to volunteer, not necessarily to do good, but because when you are a human being, you're more comfortable living in a group. In order to live properly in a group, you have to learn a certain number of things. Chief among them are on that core values sign over there. Those don't come naturally. You have to learn them along the way. You're not born with them. You get some of them from your family, if you're lucky. You get some of them from your teachers, if you're lucky. You get some of them from people you meet during your day. But you have to learn them on your own. And people learn best when they're having fun doing it. So what I'm trying to do, when I'm volunteering, all of the things I've done in the Volunteer Connection, and I will say that Sue lied a little, I draw the line at things like, well, say, quarks. I think you have to be half-mad to understand the kind of activities that are in quarks. I've never been able to understand how there are only six of them, they got seven names for it. But that's one thing that I have done throughout the time that we've been doing this at the Oxboro Library. I have had people in there that were preschoolers, working on learning the alphabet and all the colors, and where do you put the colors in the rainbow? Do they all go wherever you want, or do they have to go in some kind of order? And there are some of those kids that are really sure they have to get them exactly right, or they're not going to let them into school. Well, I also had one college student who came in and said, "I haven't had any math since high school, and I signed up for a math class. I need some review real quick." Well, it turned out, it's she remembered all the stuff she'd had in high school, she just needed a little prompting to get it out. Myself, I suppose I could give you a little background. I was actually a school teacher myself, many years ago, 50-odd, actually. I was a math and science teacher. The science has changed, the math is just about the same, but they're learning at different rates now. I was stunned when I started the Volunteer Connection and realized they were learning lattice multiplication in third grade. I didn't know lattice multiplication existed until I was a junior in college. And then I went and learned about it, except I took a course in the history of mathematics. We didn't learn how to use it, we just learned that it was there. Well, now I can lattice multiply because I helped some fourth graders who didn't really get it yet. I started out in the fourth grade in Valley View, visiting fourth grade class. The next year, I did a fourth grade class and a fifth grade class. And then after that, I moved on to reading to all of the new beginning readers in kindergarten. Once in a great while, you run across somebody that knows how to read when they get to kindergarten already. I, myself, learned how to read when I was three. My grandfather sat me down and read me something every single day except for Sunday. We took Sundays off, but every other day of the week, grandfather would sit me down and say, "Well, Peter, what story would you like to hear today?" And we had a big book called Johnny Rule's Collection for Little Boys, and that started with Reggie, Anne, and Andy, and went through a whole bunch of other things. And also, once a day, usually in the afternoon, my mother would read me a chapter out of the Oz books, or maybe from Albert Bigelow Plain. For those of you who are not familiar with Albert Bigelow Plain, he wrote a bunch of children's books back about the turn of the century, back in 1900, but he was best known because he lived for two years with the Clemens family and wrote the definitive biography of Mark Twain. At least until a few years ago, that was the definitive biography of Mark Twain. Then his autobiography came out, and I'm pretty sure that that has replaced Albert Bigelow Plain. Bigelow Paine. Now, I have tons of authors stuck in here. And once in a while, I will have some kid say, "Who's your favorite author?" But most often, they want to know, "What's your favorite video game?" Well, I tell them, "You can read books off of the computer, too." I do that for three or four hours a week, generally. And I have a couple of e-readers. So I'm not just stuck with what is, in the publishing game, hard copies, although some of them are actually softcover now. But I think that reading is going to be important for a long time, whether you're reading it off a screen, or whether you're reading it out of what we consider to be a traditional book. And that's a good thing to help with. When I first started this, I thought, "What do you got to offer for these people? They're way beyond where you were. They're having things electronic in school board meetings." The first school board meeting I went to, I was four years old. It was in Freeman, South Dakota. My dad had just been hired as superintendent of schools. Head of the school board, a nice man named Emil Elwine, invited the whole family to come to be introduced to the school board. So I went, and there were all these people that I didn't know any of. And they didn't have any other little kids in there. It was just me and my parents. And they wrote things down, but it wasn't anything like a personal computer back then. That was 68 years ago. Just think of the advances that we have had to learn about the past 68 years. Hopefully, some of the things I'm trying to do, and some of the things that other volunteers are trying to do, are going to help the kids nowadays get on through the things that are coming up in the next 68 years. I don't expect to be around to see most of them myself, but I will have some sort of legacy living through them on the same as everybody else in here is. We all have something to do with kids and how they're learning. And I think that being a volunteer in Bloomington is a real good thing to be at the moment. Now, myself, I didn't go to school in Bloomington like somebody who just said that she was still in the schools here. I went to school in an enemy. My wife and I graduated from Richfield. But we're here now, and we're helping here. And I hope to do it for a good many years along the way.
Thank you to all the K-12 volunteers. And I'm Mary Jo Bayless. I'm here to just talk about, a little bit about our volunteers in the adult program. We have, as Gina mentioned, volunteers who help in adult diploma, in GED, and in our adult ESL classes in Eden Prairie, Edina, Richfield, and in Bloomington. So we're a consortia. And I'm really, really proud of what we do and how the volunteer program adds to our students' learning experience. Things change every day at school, as they do in all of your schools. And it's really nice to be able to meet those needs when you can with volunteers. One day, we'll have an adult diploma teacher say, "I have these five students who need to work on decimals and percentages, but we don't have a place for them." Well, we have a volunteer for that. Or a teacher will say, "These students can read really well and write really well, but their conversation is very behind. People can't understand what they're saying. They need some practice." We have a volunteer for that. And I'm just really proud of all the work that we do in those classes. We had invited one of our volunteers to be here tonight, and he's unfortunately ill. So I'm just going to tell you a little bit about him. But first, I want to say that, like the K-12 volunteers, these are the most amazing people I have ever met in my entire life. Volunteers come for so many different reasons. Their motivations are as individual as they are. Some people travel a lot, and so they just like being with other cultures. And so they're sort of drawn to volunteering in a setting like ours. Some people want to give back. Some people want to share their love of reading, just a vast variety of skills and experiences, but they want to do something with it. And when they help our students, they're not only helping our students achieve and make their lives better, but they are affecting the whole family. Those parents can then go home and help with homework, read what's coming home in the backpacks, and all those things. So we really feel the impact of that every day and are very proud of it. So I'll tell you a little bit about Nahom. Nahom is 21, and he's a student at Normandale Community College right now. He's taking 18 credits this semester. Nahom Mazagaz, I told him I wouldn't be able to pronounce this, Mazagzi, is from Eritrea. And he was the youngest of seven children. His father died when he was in first grade. His older siblings did everything they could to keep the family going, which they were successful at. The mother couldn't work, so it was up to them. And after Nahom finished school in Eritrea, he moved to Uganda for high school because you could get a little bit better education there. And he was very motivated and focused on that. He got his diploma in Uganda before moving to the United States in 2012. And when he got here, he knew what his goals were. He wanted to work in medicine, but he felt it was really important to get a US diploma, a high school diploma. And so that's how he came to Metro South. And he just really added a spark to our student body last year. He's just this great young man with tons of energy and always smiling, and very intelligent, and just a can-do attitude. So we were really happy when he graduated last year. If some of you were at our graduation ceremony, you might remember him receiving a scholarship at the graduation. And so he's, as I said, at Normandale and in part of the service learning program. So he needed some volunteer hours, but he also wanted to give back to the school that helped him get his high school diploma. So he volunteers every Wednesday afternoon in our homework lab, helping with math. And the students just love him. They remember him from last year. And he's very patient and approachable, and he just does a great job. And he really makes them feel like, hey, if he can do it, I can do it. He's at Normandale, he's going to college, he was just here last year, so it's very inspiring to them. So in closing, I just want to say a couple more things about Nahom, because he's kind of a character. He speaks three languages. He likes to watch documentaries. He's obviously strong in math, chemistry, physics, and biology. Nahom wants to be a neurosurgeon. He's already been to the U, been to the department where you study, where you can be, a neurosurgeon. He loves to learn about the brain, and so he's talked to all kinds of people at the U, knows where he's going next, taking his generals at Normandale right now. When he was in Uganda, he said he volunteered in a kindergarten class. That was his first volunteer experience. And he was an assistant teacher, and he says it was the hardest job he's ever had. One of his other goals is, he wants to be on Jeopardy someday, because he says it's the most interesting TV show ever. And he describes himself as an achiever and a perfectionist, we would agree. And I guess that's it. But I wish you could have met him. Come and see us sometime on a Wednesday. He'll be there, like so many of our other volunteers, who are just so dependable and dedicated and passionate about being there with us and helping us with our mission. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Before you go, we have a little bit more to read for you.
That's right.
We're not going to let you off the hook that easy. I brought my clean glasses tonight. All right. Whereas the care, commitment, and hard work of our world-class, diverse volunteers have made our schools more effective places in which to learn, and whereas volunteers have enriched and expanded the learning opportunities available to learners of all ages and abilities, and whereas volunteerism is a living lesson that embodies a spirit of giving and a spirit of lifelong learning, and whereas we wish to celebrate the many gifts of the thousands of volunteers contributing to the Bloomington Public Schools and our programs for children, youth, and adults, now therefore, the Board of Education of Bloomington Public Schools does hereby proclaim April 2014 as Bloomington Public Schools Volunteer Recognition Month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, now we need to vote on that motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Now, part of our high school seniors' opportunities in their classes is to come and witness or attend a public official meeting. And you can go to city council, you can go to school board. Sometimes they come to school board, and they kind of hide in the back. And we have a full audience tonight, so I'm not really sure if I'm seeing any high school seniors. Are there any seniors here that are fulfilling that requirement? So this young lady has hidden herself directly in front of me. And what I'm going to ask you to do is, if you'd come up to the microphone here, just tell us who you are, what school you go to, and who your favorite teacher is.
Take it back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Katie Duncan, and I'm a senior at Jefferson High School. And I don't really have a favorite teacher. Ms. Dargay is my homeroom teacher, so I guess I have to choose her, but...
Four years.
Four years.
Thank you so much for coming, Katie. Didn't mean to put you on the spot. All right. I'm going to read this off. I think I know the answer. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address the school board on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? If so, come on up. Just take a moment to introduce yourselves, tell us who you are and what you want to
School Board Chair Bergstrom. I'm supposed to introduce myself, aren't I? I'm Molly Geislinger.
I'm Marissa Johnson.
School Board Chair Bergstrom, Director of the Bloomington School Board, Superintendent Fujitaki, Cabinet Members, members of the audience present in the Arlene Bush Boardroom, and to the citizens of Bloomington watching on Beck TV. Good evening. My name is Molly Geislinger.
And my name is Marissa Johnson. Both of us are here tonight representing the membership of the Bloomington Federation of Teachers. Our executive board stands with us in unity.
We want to share with the board and the general public that it has been 288 days since our contract with the district expired. We have had 19 bargaining sessions, and yet we have no agreement. In spite of this, our members continue to teach, to counsel, to support, and to inspire the 10,000-plus students in the Bloomington School District with professionalism and pride.
In this chamber last fall, when the administration was rallying the public to support a $60 million referendum for technology and safety, your public relations consultant stated that the teachers in this district were among the most highly rated that he had seen. Our public approval rating was at 90%. It is evident that Bloomington parents and community in general support our teachers. From reports in local newspapers and in the district's employee newsletter, The Ink Spot, and by the letters of recommendation as teachers are nominated for recognition with the Prodigy Award, CAC Award, and awards by local TV news media, it is clear that we have an exceptional teaching force here in Bloomington.
Bloomington's highly qualified teachers deliver cutting-edge instruction and services to the children and youth in the district. We know this because of multiple measures from our standardized test scores and other measures of academic success, such as the ACT and SAT, to the student work we see every day. In a presentation to the board in November of 2013, the district's Executive Director of Research Evaluation and Assessment, Dr. David Heisted, when describing our student MCA test scores, stated, "These are some of the best results I've ever seen, not just in Bloomington, but anywhere."
Members of the board and Superintendent Fujitaki, we respectfully urge the district administration to work harder to settle our ongoing contract negotiations. Last fall, when asking for community support for the referendum, you proudly stated that the district's finances were in good shape. The teachers in this district, along with the other employee groups, have helped the district weather difficult financial times over the last several years by deferring salary increases that would have kept pace with inflationary trends, by working harder and longer hours in the evening and on weekends, and by sharing their time and talents through meeting ever-increasing demands for district initiatives and new curricula.
BFT members are proud of our students' achievements in the classroom, in the wide range of sports and extracurricular activities they pursue, in their community participation through their volunteerism, an inspired sense of social responsibility, and in the workplace as they learn real-life skills and prepare for the future. We are proud of the critical role we play in guiding the lives of our students, to help them make good personal choices regarding their education, to share their talents with others, and to be respectful of all regardless of their socioeconomic status, culture, or ethnicity.
We are proud of our teaching colleagues, who sacrifice and generously share their own resources to give something extra to a child in need, or purchase supplies and materials out of their own pockets to enrich the lives and educational opportunities for their students. Indeed, as the adage states, "It takes a village to raise a child." The teaching professionals in Bloomington are key members of that village and are among the best in this state in producing excellent outcomes for our students.
As one of four remaining metro districts without a settlement, we respectfully ask that the school board and administration work with us to find ways to provide a fair and equitable settlement to these prolonged contract negotiations. As it says in our union logo, "We believe in building futures together. Together, let's get this contract done so we can focus on our shared task of teaching and building the future of our students." Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Please feel free to stay. I know it's probably a little warm where you're sitting, but we welcome an audience. All right, now we move on to the Part A agenda. We're looking for a motion to approve this particular part of the agenda in whole.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any conversation? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Grab my glasses here. All right, the first one on Part B is Authorization of 2014-15 General Capital Projects Levy and Community Services Fund Early Expenditures. And Rod Zivkovich is going to present to us tonight. Do we have... Do we have somebody to read this one? Chair Bergstrom. Director Oliva.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 authorizes administration to begin purchasing items needed for the 2014-15 school year. These purchases will not exceed 5% of the 2013-14 General Capital Projects Levy and Community Services budgets.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Rod, what can you tell us about this?
Chair Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This is an annual event that we bring this resolution to the board. It allows administration to make purchases for the next year that need the lead time of purchasing before the actual budget is being set in June. So it's just giving different departments the ability to order things in advance. And again, it's only a, as you can see, 5% of the overall budget.
Anyone have any questions, comments? All right, let's move to a vote then. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item up, number two, non-renewal probationary teacher contracts.
Mr. Chair.
Chair. All right, well, we've got a race here. Jim, I'll let you have this one.
I move the approval of separate resolutions to not renew the following probationary teachers: Karen Albrecht, Nancy Branch, Ann Carstens, Charles Urb, John Ott, and Andrew Weiss. And this resolution is as follows. Resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40 that the teaching contract of the previously-named probationary teacher in Independent School District Number 271 is hereby terminated at the close of the current 2013-2014 school year, ending June 30, 2014, and is not renewed for the 2014-2015 school year. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the school board shall issue written notice to said teacher regarding non-renewal of teacher's contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be substantially the following form. Notice of termination. You are hereby notified that at a regular meeting of the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 held April 14, 2014, a resolution was adopted by a majority roll called vote, giving action that your teaching contract will not be renewed effective at the end of the school year, June 30, 2014, and is not renewed for the 2014-2015 school year. Said action of the board is taken pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40. You may officially request that the school board gives its reasons for the non-renewal of your teaching contract. However, such contract must be received within 10 days after the receipt of this notice.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Mary Burrows, our Director of Human Resources, is here to help us understand. Thanks for coming, Mary.
Chair Bergstrom, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Fujitaki, this is an annual occurrence, again, that we come before the board and ask for non-renewals of probationary contracts. It can be due to many different reasons, including class size needs or performance needs and other things. In comparison to previous years, this is a really low number when I've been looking through your history. So at this time, I guess I would be open to any questions or move to pass the resolution.
Any questions, comments? Yes, Director Bennett.
Well, first of all, I think it's good that this list has gotten smaller. Last week it was larger. I'm thinking, question I have is I'm looking at these professions here, and half of them are special ed teachers. Is there a reason for that?
No, I do not think so.
I mean, are they, do we have like a decline in special ed population, or?
No, it all depends. Again, this goes into area of licensure needs and the needs of the students. And if they're, to really get into it further, it could be due to where they're licensed, if they're allowed to have any more variances on that license, if they're not licensed in the proper area of special education. So that could be the cause of some of it.
Okay, so these teachers are not being renewed. Is that going to affect the caseload of the other special ed teachers at all? So everything's going to be the same?
Yeah, it'll be the same, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments? Anything? Okay. Well, it looks like we're going to go for a roll call vote. And so I've been trying to work out my alphabet here. So I think I have this right. We'll start off with Marie.
Aye.
Goes to Tom.
Aye.
And it goes to myself. I vote aye. And it goes to Nellie, is that right?
Aye.
And Rick.
Aye.
And Jim Sorum.
Aye.
And Don Stegoff.
Aye.
All right. That's, that motion passed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, Mary. If I did get my spelling incorrect, you're free to check me at a later date. All right, number three, we're going to work on some policy review here. We're looking at, let's see, Revised Policy 102. Who wants to read that particular one? Don got her hand up first there. Go ahead.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the first reading of Revised Policy 102, equal educational opportunity.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. All right, this particular one, we did just a few minor word changes, something that we've gone over. Any questions, comments? Yes, Superintendent. Comments?
One of the board's major responsibilities is to develop and establish a set of policies to help govern the district. Another responsibility is to review and update the policies as needed. Our policies, our set of policies are divided into nine categories. At a board retreat in February, the board agreed to start the review and updating process. Therefore, tonight, we're looking at Policy 102, which is in the first category of policies, which is titled "School District Policies." There's only one policy, and that's this. As the chair stated, there are only minor word changes and the deletion of the statute references as recommended by legal counsel. And this policy was studied at the March 24 study session.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we move on to Policy 202. Who would like to read that one?
Mr. Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the first reading of Revised Policy 202 board elections.
This is moved and seconded. We have any conversation?
Yeah, I don't think we ever finished our conversation the other night because we had to stop because of our, we had to move to the closed session. So I think, well, we get this booklet that comes from the MSBA called The First Monday in January. And I did, I'm sure all of you have it, but this was just recently updated in October 2013. I just want to read the first paragraph by May. So it starts off, "The first Monday, meeting in January, under the law, the board must meet and organize by selecting a chair, clerk, and treasurer who shall hold their offices for one year and until their successors are selected and qualified. A remote possibility exists that all of the most recently selected board officers and members will no longer be on the board or unavailable. In that case, the board as a whole should call the meeting to order. If most of the, if the most recently selected chair, the person elected chair last year, is still on the board, that board member should call the meeting to order and run the meeting until his or her successor is selected and qualifies. If the most recent chair is no longer on the board or is not available, the most recently selected vice chair, if the board has one, clerk, or treasurer in that order, should be asked to call the meeting in order and run the meeting. Otherwise, the board must select a different member to open the meeting and preside over the election of the chair, who will then move into, who will then move into place and conduct the rest of the election and meeting. If all the most recently selected officers are unavailable and the board is unable to reach a consensus, the board should use an agreed-upon method, such as calling on the most senior board member present or a member who draws the shortest straw to choose a person to serve that capacity. The board should also use similar process in determining who will serve as clerk and be responsible for recording the minutes until the successor is selected by the board. Additionally, because superintendents are considered ex officio or non, are non-voting members of the board, at no time should the superintendent act as chair. From this point on, the officers who are selected by the process just ascribed to serve until new officers are selected." So I'm reading this from the MSBA, and I'm reading our policy, and it's a complete contradiction of what the MSBA is trying to do. In our policy, it has that the superintendent will be the convener of the election until the school board, until the school chair is selected. And I just don't think that it adds up, and I think that we need to go with what the MSBA is directing us to do. I mean, I know that here it says directly, you know, "At no time, the superintendent shall act as chair." And we're using terms like, you know, convener or facilitator, but really, if someone who is not the chair is running the meeting, they are the acting chair. So I think that we have other ways that we can figure out how to do these meetings.
Okay, any other conversation? Yeah, Director Sorum.
I just want to say, from a historical perspective, this was introduced a long time ago with the approval of the chair and the superintendents, plural, that, as was identified, nowhere in the MSBA does it talk about a convener. And as we have gone through caucuses and political caucuses and various other organizations, when there is no officers elected, everything starts out a blank, there has to be a convener. Sometimes the group then will elect convener. They'll just, somebody will stand up and say, "Who can convene it or open the caucus meeting or the organizational meeting?" And then that person just convenes the session and says, "Okay, the meeting will now be, will open, and the first item on the agenda is to elect a chair, and the nomination's coming." And as soon as that happens, that person then becomes the chair and then takes over from that. So with the absence of the word "convener" in the MSBA and our historical perspective, it can go, it can go either way. It's a momentary decision, and technically, it's a board meeting and can be construed anytime. But I'm not convinced introducing that change in our policy will do anything to change what we've done. So I guess I'm speaking in a sense of, I don't know why we need to, maybe some words could be taken out of that MSBA model to put in to our policy, but the way it was rewritten and the explanation that the MSBA people that I've talked to said, "Yeah, you can do it either way. You know, it's just a matter of how you all decide you want to do as a board." So I think that's pretty much what we were left at the last discussion, too, was that, now this is the first reading, of course, that makes it a little bit more official.
Yeah, Superintendent.
As a result of the conversation that we had at the last session, I called MSBA, talked to Kathy Miller. She's the director of their legal and policy services, and she did share the same language that you just read. And then I shared our language, and at the end of the conversation, she had no objections to the way our language is proposed, not proposed, the way our policy reads currently. So she had no objections to the current language.
Any other conversation?
I think that a technical aspect is because we come and we call the meeting to order, and the meeting has to be called to order by a board member, typically the highest ranking or whatever it is. And then when we have the pledge and go, I think we take our oaths of office, the new members take their oaths of office and do other things like that, then it gets into the select, the election of a school board chair. And at that time, then the superintendent can just be the convener of the meeting at that.
Yeah, Nellie.
Yeah. So first of all, thank you, Director Bennett, for bringing up this conversation again. It's always good to review what, the kind of literature that we get from MSBA. But, you know, there's a big number of school boards across the state that follow this practice that is recommended by MSBA. This has to do with the process. This part of the school board policy has to do with governance process. And I, you know, I don't have anything personal towards the superintendent or any future superintendent in terms of, you know, it's not that I don't want you to be the convener, it's more related to the process itself. Why do I mean by this? You know, this is, this is governance. This is, this is board business. This should be our own process, and this should be our own business. And so I think it is, it needs to be the school board that actually is in charge of the whole process. We should be the ones being in charge of our own governance process. So I don't think it really has, for me, it's not that, you know, the language has to go this way or the language has to go that way. I think it's more that we need to be able to rule ourselves, you know? This is what is expected from us. This is why, what the community elected us, and that's what they expect us to do, too, to be able to rule our own process. And this is not a management process. This is, this is a board governance process. My other concern would be, you know, if we're not totally able of ruling this process, which is ours, then, you know, that might also give us the idea that we can pass this kind of thing into other duties that we are responsible for. So I believe we need to follow the recommendation of MSBA. And, you know, there is a reason why they are recommending this. And there's a lot of different boards that follow that recommendation. And yeah, you know, Kathy Miller seems to be okay with this, I understand that, but that may also be due to the fact that they're giving us the freedom to decide, because we are the board, and we get to decide on that. But I definitely think we should, we should be in charge of our own process. We were elected to do that.
Okay, any further conversation? Anyone want to add anything else? Yeah, Tom.
Yeah, more of a question, really. I don't, why is what the MSBA telling us to do, why is that not good enough for this district? Why do we have to do something completely different?
Well, I think it has to do with our history. This has served us well all these years. And what MSBA recommends is one thing, but at no time do we have to march, you know, following their orders. We're our own, like Nellie said, we're our own people. And if this has worked well for us, it's a five-minute, you know, experience. It's not like he's running the meeting or saying who to vote for, or I'm saying whoever the convener is. It's, you know, I don't think it's anything worth...
Well, I think it's a perception issue is part of the problem. It's showing that the board cannot handle its own meeting, so we're abdicating our lucky responsibility to the superintendent. When we can easily set up a program where we can handle our own elections, the former chair from the year previous can be the convener until we have the election and the new chair takes place. I don't know what is wrong with that process, why we decided we had to change it.
Like I said, Mr. Chair, I think that's history, and I think that, you know, you don't have to always do history, but it's worked well for us. And so I, you know, it's not, you know, that he's, that there's going to be anyone influencing or it, I don't think it shows that we can't handle our own. As in the case of what happened this year, we had no previous chair, we had no previous vice chair, we had, the next elected person was running for chair, you know? And so if that person is going to sit up there and say, "Are you going to vote for me?", you know what I mean? It, that would be, that's a bad perception, I think. It, that would be, that's a bad perception, I think. You know, it puts, it puts all of us members in a bad spot where, you know, "No, I don't want to vote for you." You know? That wouldn't be good. So you have an independent person that's not going to be voted for either way. He's got a job, no matter what happens with us.
But we, I believe that we all come here knowing that is, there is an expectation for us, and that if we're going to be put in the spot in that kind of position where you are sort of running the meeting and you're still expecting to, to get elected as the chair or not, and whether you get it or not, you, you know that you're going to be exposed to that kind of moment. So, you know, as responsible, mature board members that we are, I think that's perfectly fine, you know? Whoever gets to be the chair or the vice chair, or whether you get it or not, that has happened to us before.
Okay. Don, why don't you, go ahead.
Well, I guess I do agree that it is a short amount of time, as stated by Director Bartolana, but what I don't understand is if we're given the directions, unless there's an extreme reason that we find necessary to go away from those directions, then why can't we just do the directions and be done with it? I, I guess I don't understand, just because we have past history, you know, life changes. And so I don't understand why it would matter if we did do it the way MSBA said. I don't understand, is there like some consequence, people are worried about if we did do that? I don't, I guess, I don't, I don't understand why there would be resistance to say, you know, "This is what they say, let's do it." Unless there's some, you know, I guess for me, if I'm going to step outside of what their guidelines are, I need a good reason to do that.
Okay. Anyone else here? Yeah, Tom. Kim.
Before he goes for the fourth time, I want to get my second one. The other unique aspect that we do is that we, we take office as board members on the first, first day of January, or actually on the 12th of December, whenever we sign our papers. So then, so when the other, the board doesn't exist as such, so then when we come together the first time, we have an organizational meeting, which we go through all of the campaign or whatever it is for the various offices, you know, we fill that out. A lot of times, other districts don't do that. They just meet in the first meeting night, and then they say, "Okay, who wants to be chair?" Or, "Who wants to be this?" And therefore, it does get into those touchy situations about, you know, somebody going ahead of time and asking various board members, "Hey, you going to vote for me? You going to vote for me? Are you going to vote for me?" So when that time comes, then it's in public typically, since a lot of people don't have their workshops publicized, and then, so then it goes into, "Well, I'd like to be chair," or, "I nominate so-and-so," and then it gets to be the political game, and then it's, it's done. So if the chair happens to be a person, or the, the convener happens to be a person who might be the chair, then they're asked to remove themselves and somebody else can go in. This way, we have a non, an unbiased person who is the convener, and whatever political activities can occur, and they do in some other boards, you know, then it's, then it's resolved right then and there, and, and, and the board meeting goes on with the new chair. So it's, it's just sometimes, when, when we've done this before in workshops, before they were televised, public would wonder, "How did that happen?" You know, somebody's nominated, and all of a sudden, everybody votes for them, and someone's nominated for the next person, and everybody votes for them. So it does kind of look like there's been pre-established candidate selection, so to speak. So it, it's, it's not clean, and it just, sometimes you wonder how it is. So having a unbiased person, I, I can go either way, you know, the wording, whatever the wording we resolve to, to do can be done. It's just that, you know, I follow a pattern of some history and some other organizational structures whereby the convener typically is not going to be a candidate for an office.
Can I get my one? You know I'm going to say something, right?
Director Leiva, go first.
I tried to wait for you to go, but...
I mean, I'll, I'll say first, I actually don't really care who runs the meeting, but if we're looking at, why would we change things? Why would we keep it the same? If you look at the statute, which is MS 123B dot 14, it comes up pretty fast in Google, it just says that we have to select these people. What the MS, uh, MSB says is that the acting chair asks for nominations, but nowhere in here does it, at least not that I read, does it say that the acting chair asks for nominations. It just says, "On the first Monday of January each year or soon thereafter, as practicable, the board must meet and organize by selecting a chair, clerk, and treasurer who shall hold their offices for one year and until their successors are selected and qualified. Persons who perform the duties of the clerk and treasurer need not be members of the board, and the board by resolution may combine the duties of the offices of clerk and treasurer and single person in the office of business affairs. They may appoint the superintendent, who shall be ex officio, a member of the board, but not entitled to vote therein." So the statute, it doesn't matter. They just say, "We have to figure it out." So what the MSBA recommendation is saying is they're assuming that you would have your acting chair, or the person who's acting as chair in the meeting, run the election, and they're saying the superintendent shouldn't be the chair. But in the statute, it doesn't mention anything about a chair asking for nominations, it just says, "You just have to figure it out." And so... Yeah, I, I think I'm with Director Sorum, like, it doesn't really matter to me. I don't think it should be, I don't think it should feel like it's a, you know, this big of a battle. And I, you know, going to what Director Bartolana had said, it could potentially put you in an awkward situation if the person who's acting as convener is now asking for people for nominations for chair. So I guess, you know, I'm 51-49, like, it doesn't, but to me, it doesn't really matter, so that's, that's all I have to say. I just want to point out that the statute doesn't say anything about the chair asking for nominations, it just says that we just have to do it.
Okay, I think we can, I'll give you one last shot here.
Okay. Well, just to address the comments that Director Bartolana and Director Leiva made about the, it puts people in an awkward position if the chair is, when calling for nominations. And the, when we have the organizational meeting, the election is really a formality because a week prior, we've already decided who's going to be chair. We've already, everyone who wants to be chair has spoken and given a speech, and we've already decided it. So it's not really going to change anyone's vote. It's not going to change their vote from one week to the next just because someone's convening the meeting, they're going to change their vote? I don't see that being a problem.
It could.
It could, and it has.
So if we feel that that's going to be a problem, then there's other people that we can have convene the meeting. We can, as the MSBA just recommended, we could draw straws to who convenes the meeting. We can have one of us other board members convene the meeting. I don't think all seven of us are ever going to run the chair. I think if one of us is not going to run the chair. So we can draw straws.
Okay. Marie, did you have one?
Well, I just think that it had, like Director Sorum just said, that has happened, and why, at that time of the year, I mean, now I'm being a woman, but at that time of the year, why add another step into all this? Because then we're going to have to work on who's going to be the convener, and then we're going to have to have another meeting on who's going to be the convener. I mean, it's, it's pretty simple. For the five minutes that we need a convener, let the superintendent do it, that's what I feel.
Yeah, Superintendent.
These policies were created by ancestors, and I have trust in them that they went through a process to come to this. This was developed 30 years ago. I checked with our attorneys, and they tell me that we're not filing any laws by doing this, so it confirms what Director Leiva came up with. And the convener or election officers are used by other boards and other organizations to elect the, elect the chair. So it's not unorthodox to do that. I just want to make sure that if we do change what has been set before, we change it for good reason, and not that we're in violation of anything. But I appreciate the conversation.
Okay.
Just want to share that information.
Yeah, Director Corbin.
I, I think the recommendation of MSBA is just, it's just so simple, you know? It's, I think it would serve us well because it's pretty simple. I mean, it goes from starting with the chair and the vice chair, you know, and then if either one of those are present, then you go to the clerk. But I just don't see why we need to put this kind of job in the, in the superintendent. I mean, why are we giving this job to the superintendent with this should be a work, a job for the school board? You know? This should be our process. And like, again, like I said before, it's nothing towards our current superintendent or any superintendents that are coming in the future. I mean, he's, he's great, but it has to do more with us, you know? Why are we putting an extra thing to the superintendent when he already has a lot of things on his hands? You know? So, yeah, a good reason would be, let's take charge of our own process. This is our process, and, and also, let's, let's show our community that we are able to take charge of our own process, you know? And also, yeah, it has served us well the way it is right now. Totally understand that. But it would also be unfair that whatever was said by previous boards, you know, we have to keep that way. Because like, directors, like I've said before, you know, things change, this is a new board, and there's, you know, there's no harm in doing that. There's, there's the perfect example of like the Hopkins School District a couple of years ago, when they have the, they have the person, I believe she was the chair or the vice chair, can't remember this time, but she was running the meeting, and her intention was to be the chair, and she did not get to be the chair. And, you know, as the mature person that she is, she totally understood that, and that's what we're expecting for me, from each one of us, too. You know? Like I said before, yeah, I wanted to be the, the chair. Well, big deal, I didn't get it, okay? Glad for the other person who got it, so what's the problem? Let's just take charge of our own process, and let's keep it here as its governance, okay? This is the job of governance.
Superintendent.
Not to prolong it, I just want to make sure that we have facts on the table. I'm an ex-official member of the board, non-voting. The other thing is that we have less study sessions in the past without a clear agreement on who the next chair was going to be. So we actually entered the room with maybe three people wanting to be chair, and so, fortunately, we didn't do that this time, but in the past, that's one of the reasons why I think they came up with this process, to get a neutral, unbiased person running the thing, because there would be three people running for one. Three, I don't know how many, but more than two were wanting to be chair, leaving the study session.
Okay. That makes it a little awkward. All right. I think I can probably summarize, I think we've all shared our opinions, and I'm just going to try and condense what I've heard. So I'm hearing that, Nellie, you have been concerned that, that letting the position of the superintendent do it is possibly letting management into a board governance item? Is this what you're...
Well, not exactly. What I'm saying is that it, this is, this is a board process, governance process, and we should keep it that way.
Okay.
Within the board.
Quite frankly, I'm ambivalent towards the whole who convenes it. I don't have a strong opinion either way. I, I have one concern, and only one, and that is that if we change the wording to match MSBA policy, are we setting precedent to match? Does that mean next month, we're going to, we're going to go over three or four more policies? And pretty soon, when we go through MSBA policy, every single one of them is going to be followed to the letter of MSBA law by Bloomington. I think what they're, what MSBA sends us and tells us is, here's a, here's a template, sort of tweak it, tailor it, try and make it fit. And I think that's what we're doing with our 108 or 109 policy. So I would have a concern in that respect. Otherwise, as far as who convenes it, you know, this year was a little awkward for me because we didn't have a past chair, we didn't have a past vice chair, and I was a clerk sitting at the end of the table, and, "Okay, I'll come up." We had a procedure in place, I was fine with that. But if we want to tweak it and, and make it be whoever's the, the highest ranking officer from last year that puts it back in the board's lap, fine with me.
Well, and in regards to your concerns, what I would say is that, of course, we don't necessarily have to follow every time that we have MSBA recommendations. I think we are, as a board, we're very capable of deciding based of what their needs are of our community, school community.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Unless it's mandated, of course.
Well, I'll just get my last word in, and I just think that it's worked well for us for so long that to add another step would be foolhardy. I think this has worked well.
Okay, one last...
No, okay, one last thing. Well, from what I'm hearing from most of the board members is that there's several that are against the superintendent doing this process, and that there's, everyone else seems to not really care. So if the two people, two sides are, don't have a superintendent or don't care, then it makes sense to me that we should take the superintendent out of the equation. People don't care, then let's go with the MSBA recommends.
Well, we can, we can tweak this language, that's kind of what this is about.
It is, too, and I think, you know, the fact that MSBA does not use the term "convener", which is critical to any kind of an organizational structure, where you have election of officers pursuing, then that's, that was one of the historical perspectives. And the fact that Nellie alluded to a Hopkins situation where there was a bit of a confusion. We've had a few of those over the years where somebody did gather four people to be elected, and then there was mind-changing done in the process. And so it was kind of a unfortunate political maneuvering that was public, even though things were done at the workshop. I just, I just, I just, you know, this is the first reading, and of course, then we can put some changes into it, whatever, but then, you know, during, during the second reading or so forth like that, more, more history might be found, but I'm, I'm concerned about the word "convener," because that is what it is.
Point of order. I learned at the MSBA conference, that means I have a question, so...
Yes, your question, Director Leiva.
But it sounds a lot fancier, so I'll use that.
It does.
If, if we were to change this, who makes the revision? Or would we all submit revisions? Or do we, right now, say, "This is what we would like the revision to be," and then we come back and discuss it again? Future board meeting, or how does it exactly, would this process work if we decide to change this?
Well, you can, you can move to revise, you can, we can vote on this as, and revised or amended. Is that the right language I'm looking for, David?
You can make a motion to amend to include the language that Tom had mentioned. You could make a motion to table it and have the administration take comments and come back with a different proposal, or you can just pass it as it is.
Okay.
Three, three options there.
So if we were to just say something to the effect of, immediately after the swearing-in of the new board members, the board will select the convener, a convener, and in the next sentence, "The convener will call for nominations." That convener could be anybody, or it could be the superintendent, but it would be like another election process. Or would we want to just say, "It is," and then do it the exact way that MSBA said?
Well, if, if we follow the recommendation from MSBA, then the wording is, is different, it does not include a convener in there.
So, so we're just looking for the next highest...
Right.
...board member from last year.
But I have a question for the superintendent.
Yeah.
Is there any specific recommendation about this that comes from the administrators association or superintendents association?
I never checked with them. So is it fair...
Are you aware of that?
Sorry, is it fair to say we're just looking for the next highest ranking officer from last year? Is that what we want to say? That keeps it with the board?
I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even throw that into it. I mean, if we're looking for a convener, as soon as everybody has been sworn in, then somebody will just say, "Hey, you want to convene? Get this thing rolling," or something like that, could be anybody. If we start maybe making a seniority, seniority situation, that might catch us in another glitch if everybody... everybody is new.
I don't, we might be stepping into some legal no-no's if we just say anybody. And if I look into the room here, you know, I can.
I meant any new, any board members that were elected, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
I kind of like the idea of drawing straws. It's completely random. It's not going to be, put anyone in an awkward position. It gives everyone equal opportunity to sit in the big chair for two minutes.
Well, chances are that any people won't try to do that.
But if you're drawing straws, everybody picks a straw.
Well, no.
Would you have liked, in the first meeting, said, okay, you go to it?
Yeah, I would agree that we have to go with seniority. Yeah, we will have to go with seniority with whoever.
That's a fine way to do it as well. I think there's plenty of ways we could do it with those members.
Did they really say draw straws?
Said, or other, it said, the more senior member or draw straws or?
They did say draw straws in a recommendation.
It said first to go by order of officers that were left and then by either who had been on the long list or other method, like drawing straws was their example, it said. If you were out of officers.
Essentially, we're looking for tiebreakers. So we have highest elected remaining officer of last year's board. If none exists for whatever reason, then what is our next step?
Seniority among the serving board member.
Seniority?
Seniority.
Seniority?
I would.
Does that sound good?
I would say.
Mr. Chair, if it's taken us this long to even get to this point, imagine what it's going to be like if they had organizational meeting.
I know. I have a feeling, though, that we're almost there for this one.
If you just use their language, you don't have to have the discussion how they do it, how to do it. They laid it out.
Right.
They said, this is the steps you would take. This is the order. You would pick who gets to sit in that chair. They laid all of it out until you got down to where there was nobody else to put in and then they gave draw straw or whatever.
Okay, so are we?
So you wouldn't have to have a conversation every time on how to do it. You would just follow their rules or their guidelines.
The guidelines, yeah.
Am I hearing a motion to amend and lift that language and put it in here? So moved. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I just think that would be easier than making up our own and sitting here.
Well, I made this motion. I'd like to vote on this motion, to accept it the way it is.
Someone still can make a motion to amend.
Right. I think Tom just did. Did you or not?
Yeah.
Do we make the motion after we put that motion?
To amend the current motion.
They're not listening.
Do we have to vote on this motion first?
No. A motion to amend takes precedence over the main motion.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to amend the language of.
Tom just did, sorry.
Oh, you did it? Okay, go ahead. You started the conversation, go ahead.
All right, now, just so I'm clear and so the record's clear and so our friendly reporter in the front row is clear, what are we amending? What are we asking this amendment to do?
That the policy reflect the guidelines put out from MSBA in the book entitled First Monday in January.
Okay, and that is for election of?
For election of officers, yeah.
Only.
Okay. All right, so it's moved and seconded?
So you're going to substitute that language under the Section A, election of board officers? That's the motion, so, okay.
All right, so we have that ready. Now we can move to vote. All those in favor of this resolution as?
Excuse me, you're voting on the motion to amend?
Motion to amend, I'm sorry. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
No.
No.
All right, well, I'm hearing.
Should take a roll call vote.
Yeah, well, let's go backwards this time, if I may.
You know, it's not always fair.
We'll start with Director Oliva.
Aye.
Director Corman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye?
No.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
All right, I have that as five-two. All right, so that amendment passes.
You now have the amended motion on the floor.
Okay, and so now we vote on the motion in total. Is that?
Yeah, that's right, as amended, yes.
All right. So, all those in favor of this amended resolution as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Can I ask permission before? So when we amend this, then we'll get another first reading next time?
Right.
With the new language?
Well, wait a minute, no, this will be the first reading. You're passing the resolution to have the first reading as amended.
Right.
So the next meeting would be a second.
Okay, so it's not, we not doing it until we do the second reading? It's not official policy?
It's not official.
We'll have another opportunity to look at it and say?
Yep, yep, okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
The motion carries. It looks as though it was five-two. Is there any?
Then you might want to do a roll call again.
All right, roll call. Let's start with Don since my.
Aye.
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 No.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that was six-one.
Let's want to get.
All right, so this got us through our first reading. I really do appreciate the conversation. It's good to hear we got through this. Let's move on to our next and last, which is Revised Policy 208 Regulations. Who'd like to read that one?
Mr. Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent Schools District Number 271 approves the first reading of Revised Policy 208, Board Policies.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. This is just sort of the language that we hashed out in our March 24th study session. Any conversation on this one? We all talked out?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, does this new board policy reflect all the changes? I mean, sometimes we've seen revised revisions with lines through them or some of the wording changes or something. Is this just?
Reflects all the changes.
All the changes in this one? Compared to what we saw before, yeah? Thank you.
Any other conversation? Okay, we'll move to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, then we have one last one here. This is 208.1 Regulations. Like to read this one.
Mr. Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent Schools District Number 271 approves the first reading of the Revised Policy 208.1 Regulations.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any conversation? This one does have some crossouts on it, so we can see what language stayed and what went away. Essentially, it's just to establish process formulating, updating, and deleting regulations. Any conversation? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that wasn't so hard. Okay, now we get to board member reports. The opportunity at the agenda for board members to share what they've been up to, any committee assignments, anything they've?
What they've learned.
Done and learned. Director Bennett?
Well, it was nice to have spring break. That was the first week I haven't, I've had clear since I started this process in January, so that was fun. And last week, I was able to go to one of my schools, Hillcrest, where they had a play, I believe it was called Munchkin Mediation Conflict Resolution. And it was all the kindergartners through second grade. And Director Corman's son was in there and he was the cutest little guy. One of the, he squeezed his little cheek, he's so cute. It was a lot of fun. It was about the Wizard of Oz a year later and all of our heroes were having conflict resolution problems. So they come back to Munchkin Land to seek advice from the Munchkins. And it was about 45 minutes and I was laughing the entire time. It was a lot of fun. And then last Friday, I went to Washburn's. I took my kids with me to the carnival, which is always fun. They let me play or run a game. I was running the frisbee through the hoops game, so that was a lot of fun. And carnivals are great. This is carnival season, pretty much carnivals every weekend. So I'm looking forward to getting to as many of them as I possibly can. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Maria.
Well, first I'd like to say we all participated in the Senior Achievement Dinner last week. And it was a wonderful event where we honored approximately 100, a little more than 100 seniors from both high schools in categories of academic excellence, curricular excellence, volunteerism, artistic excellence, and leadership. It's always fun every year, kicks off the graduation season, I think. I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow evening, the Education Foundation is having an event to honor three of their board members that are going off the board, Karen Orazzi, Arlene Bush, and the late Carol Casperson. And if you're interested in attending, it will be April 15th, which is tomorrow night, 5:45 to 7:00 p.m. at the Bloomington Hilton. And the cost is $20 at the door, but it'll be a nice event to honor those people that have given a lot to the education of Bloomington students. I'd also like to mention that the Box City Vigil is coming up at Oak Grove. This year, they're going to hold it at Oak Grove Presbyterian Church. They've, in the past, held it on the grounds of the state capitol. I'm not exactly sure why they're not doing it there this year, but Oak Grove Presbyterian is always a good partner with us and welcomes events like this. It will be May 30th. It'll begin at 6:00 p.m. and it will end Saturday, May 31st, at 7:00 a.m. If you just Google Box City Vigil 2014, you can get some more information on how you can be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's through Bloomington United for Youth.
They're one of the sponsors, yes.
Anyone else like to share? We have some heads nodding.
Should we draw a straw? Should we draw?
Draw straws.
Go ahead. A senior member? Okay. Well, the Senior Achievement Dinner, just great to be there and see all those successful students that night, so. Then I attended, well, there was one event that was called Engaging Families for Student Success that was at Minnesota Department of Education, where a lot of representatives from the Latino communities in all different districts in Minnesota. There were some people representing Bloomington schools who are also part of our family engagement programs in Bloomington. Senator Patricia Torres-Rae was there, too, giving an update of legislation in the EL program. And then I attended AMSD last Friday. There were updates on the legislation. They are on the break right now and then coming back on Monday. Senator Melissa Wicklund was there also as a guest speaker and she's just this, you know, great, great, you know, she does a really great job, you know, representing Bloomington so well. So it was great to be there. And also, of course, I attended the Hillcrest Play where I had my son, who was a Winkie. And if you're wondering who a Winkie was in the Wizard of Oz, it used to be the slaves of the wicked witch of the West. West, yeah. What else? And then, once again, really nice to be able to share some thoughts and spend some time with students who came today from the middle school and from the high school as part of the Youth Advisory Committee for the school board.
Great. Who'd like to go next?
Sure, since I'm closest here. I did go to the Bloomington United for Youth meeting. And their big thing, as Director Broughton was saying, is the Box City Vigil. And I'm not, I don't remember if you mentioned that the proceeds are donated to Oasis for Youth. And Oasis for Youth provides a pathway for homeless and precariously housed youth to become self-sufficient contributing members of the community. One of the things that they really try to do is if a student in school becomes homeless while they're in school, they try to do everything they can to keep them in this community so that way they don't have to move districts in the middle of the year, especially towards graduation. Bloomington United for Youth is also in need of a place for common grounds. They've been trying to get this off the ground for years and they've had various incarnations of it, but if there's any business owners or anybody that has space, they'd be willing to donate or rent at a low cost. They are interested. And the Youth Advisory Committee met today. They had some great ideas, especially for the food drive. I wish the teachers were still here. I was going to mention to them that a lot of those ideas involve prizes, including putting pies in faces and dunk tanks. So teachers, if you're listening, just be aware that those will be coming down the pipe shortly and we encourage you to participate.
Thank you. Don, I think you had your hand up.
First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Superintendent Fujitaki and his staff for winning us the award from the Minnesota Department of Ed for the 2014 School Finance Award. I think it's the third time, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And I also attended the Oak Grove Elementary Family Academy. And then I attended with everyone else the Senior Achievement Recognition Banquet. Being my first time on the stage up there shaking their hands, I couldn't help but think of what great things those students were going to do in the future and whose hand I might be shaking. I was kind of, you know, because there were some exceptional students there and I just thought, wow, which one of these people is going to be the president and which one is going to cure cancer and, you know, on and on. I couldn't help but think those things as they were coming by. I also attended the Phase 3 School Board Training, Building a High Performance School Board, and the Phase 4 Training, Engaging Your Community this week. It was really great experience, lots of information, but, you know, the part I like is getting to meet other school board members and talk to them. And I especially enjoyed talking to a school board member that had been to the national meeting and talked about what that was like and how much they enjoy meeting school board members from across the country and what each state is doing in education also.
I have also been invited by the Minnesota Department of Ed to participate in a work group that is to provide input into design of a special education electronic system. The goals are to reduce redundancy, simplify the process, and ensure consistency. So we'll be meeting, I think, about four times yet this spring. And also, last of all, I also enjoyed the students this afternoon. I thought they had some really great ideas when we met with the youth. But I also wanted to mention that April is Autism Awareness Month. And I know many of you see the latest CDC numbers that tell us that one in 42 boys now will be diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. And, but what many of you maybe don't know is that for, until the last couple of years, there were no guidelines by the state of Minnesota as far as, or criteria for, an autism teacher. And so a teacher could graduate from college, get hired as an autism teacher, and not have even one hour of information about autism in their training. And so I just wanted to say that I have been very pleased in this district that we recognize that and that our administration and Special Ed Director Eric Melby, Pat Garrity, and Candy Lubansky before Eric Melby, all were very good at hiring teachers that did have the competencies to teach autism and spending staff development dollars to help those students before we had the requirement. We've been on the edge of that and worked hard to build competencies to serve the number of students we have. And I just want to thank all the teachers that show up to teach kids with autism every day and their parents, et cetera. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yes, Director Sorensen?
See, I waited until the very end because then everything else has been mentioned and so there's only one or two things left for me. And it was, as Director Oliva had alluded to, there is a movement underway in the faith communities for the teen homelessness, which is there's some agencies downtown Minneapolis, but there's none in the southwest area. And so a lot of the communities are getting together to try to do something where they actually have a place to stay. Oasis and a few other agencies are taking care of certain needs, but Treehouse and a variety of other ones, certain needs, but they actually do need a place to stay. So that's going to be something that's an action item for 2014 that I'm sure we're going to hear more about, which is also needy. But I did visit a few schools and one of the important ones was I was at Valley View Middle School and their Avid program is set up, you know, that each year they induct another class that's going to be going into the Avid program, which is, you know, one that's going to help out school-side learning and performance to ensure that all students, but most, especially the least served students in the middle schools, capable of completing a college preparatory path. So in continuing our pathways to educate. So in, in continuing our pathways to education, this, this is a program for, I don't like to use the word disadvantaged youth or risk, youth, students at risk, but of those students who, to make sure that they get the attention that's needed and the learning that's needed to participate in any kind of a preparatory pathway that we're going on. Now that we have the high school, alternative high schools identified and some of the other programs like that, we're well on our way to having the students participate and the staff to help work them through it.
All right, thank you very much. Avid is advancement via individual determination, and I get that right?
Correct.
Wonderful program. All right, I'll start off with mine. My particular report this evening starts off with an apology. I have to say that I apologize for missing a transportation negotiation meeting. It's not, not like me to miss an item that's on my agenda and I have no, I have no, no excuse for it. I missed it. I attended a nine seventeen board meeting. It was in the Dakota County Juvenile Services Center. That particular center has forty individual beds. And the, the students, the youth that are in that, that, that lockup are there for any number of reasons, all of which I'm sure they'd, upon further review, would like to have made different choices. I also had the opportunity to attend the district PTSA council meeting last week. Chief Potts was there and spoke about the increase in use of heroin in, in our community. He was speaking, I think, more love about the, the kids nineteen to twenty-four, wasn't that the age group? Somewhere in there. But it's, it's, it's finding its way into our community. It's, it's a scary, scary thing. And, and he was there just to help fill us in, give us a few statistics. If anyone has any, any questions, they can certainly talk to the police. Had an opportunity to attend the Parent Advisory Council meeting. This was in Richfield. Lots of things going on with parent advisory. They're kind of wrapping up their year here, but still a lot of events. There was a used, gently-used item like a rummage sale, yeah, I was going to say garage sale, but like a rummage sale, but everything was all cleaned up and nice and stacked up neat. It was over at Pond in the gym. Of course, I enjoyed the senior achievement banquet. We saw a couple of those students here, one representing Kennedy and one representing Jefferson at our Youth Advisory Council just before this meeting tonight. Also had the opportunity to go down to the Government Center down on Fourth and attend mock trials of none other than the Big Bad Wolf. This was some students from our, our Gifted and Talented Programs, fourth grade at, across the parking lot here at Oak Grove Elementary and fourth grade at Ridgeview. And went down and listened to these guys talk and watch out, you know, Don, you said you were shaking, you were wondering who you were shaking hands with. You know, these guys aren't too far behind the, the seniors and some really bright individuals. And it was fun to see them stretch their wings, their parents were there, some grandparents. They were in front of a judge up on the sixth floor. The door was locked. I mean, it was, it was the real deal. And these guys argued their case for and against, defense and prosecution. Afterwards, when I went and introduced myself to them and the, the prosecution side was really happy to know me because my father was the chief of the appellate division for Hennepin County for a number of years, so he prosecuted the Big Bad Wolves. Let's see, I also had an opportunity to sort of co-teach an adult education program over at our Adult Learning Campus. It had to do with wildlife. It's one of my passions and I brought, as a response to come and teach this class, I went over and brought some photographs with and, and had some great, great conversation in a class populated with adults with some learning disabilities. So that was, that was a treat, it was a pleasure, and it was fun to go over the, the computer lab afterwards and help them navigate through the sites and listen to the bird sounds and go to different sites and see the eagle cams, that kind of, that kind of fun stuff. So, that ends my report. Superintendent?
Thank you. I have two reports. First is I want to thank the public again for their support of our successful referendum election this past fall. The referendum election provided funding for two proposed plans. The first plan was technology. I'll share an update on our technology implementation. And starting in February, we did a rollout of Chromebooks to our eight hundred sixth graders. The feedback is that we're achieving the three goals that were outlined in the technology plan. The first was anywhere, anytime learning, digital content, and third was enhancing communication. Feedback is we're hitting all three goals with this rollout. Second plan was on improving the safety of our facilities. Construction work to implement those features in our facilities will begin this summer. I believe nine of our ten elementary schools will be under construction to install those safety features. The second one is, from my perspective, the board has been together for four months and I'd like to share my perspective on this. I want the public to know that from my perspective, the board is, has formed, has normed and is performing as a team to help govern the district. I'm very pleased with the performance and I enjoy working with all of you. Thank you for that. That concludes my report.
All right. We move to the other part of the agenda. Anyone have anything else?
I, I do.
Yes.
Other? Yeah. I just have a question regarding, and this question is for Superintendent Fujitaki and I don't know if red cup one is over gone, but, you know, we have talked a number of times about the, the family engagement program and I have requested a number of times for our report. I was just wondering if we know of a date when the report will be coming to the board?
I don't, I need to check and I'll get back to the chair about this.
Please, thank you.
Have that board note, okay?
Thank you.
All right, anything, anything else? Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
We need a second.
Second.
All right.
Everybody's second.
I need for a roll call.